Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me come here and bring forth this issue that I think is really important. I don't believe I'd be taking care of my community as best I want to do by ignoring this issue anymore. It's become a very important issue. Unfortunately, it's a politicized issue. And I know people feel strongly one way or the other about it. But I really would just like to share some basic information and plead with county officials to support mask-wearing, to help protect our citizens and the local economy. Nobody wants to be going through this pandemic. Nobody wants to wear a mask. Nobody wants to social distance. Nobody wants to close down businesses. But here we are in the middle of a global pandemic that we haven't seen for over 100 years. We got caught completely off-guard, the entire world did, with this novel virus. And we are now trying to learn about this particular disease faster than any other disease in the history of medicine. We are learning so much so quickly because of the lethal potential of this disease, the quick human-to-human spread, and the lethal potential, the high lethal potential. So we're learning more and more about it. How do we protect people from dying from this virus with the resources that we have right now? What we've come up with, as inconvenient as it may be, is to put on a mask and stay distant from people. That's it. That's really what we got. There's nothing else that we can really do that actually makes a significant impact at decreasing the transmission of this disease. My specific plea is because Commissioners and the City Council, our elected officials, you guys have significant influence in this community. People listen to what you say. They listen to, and they follow the examples that you set, way more than anything that I could do in my office. And that's why I'm here today, is to get you guys on board with this idea and encourage other people in the community to do it, so we can keep Hart County with low numbers and without low, and with a diminished effect on our economy. That's the goal. Okay, look, it's just recommended now. The CDC says, "Let's do it." Even our Governor Kemp, he's been going the last few weeks. I know he's had the safety pledge. And he's been saying, "Georgia, get on board. Wear a mask." Democrat, Republican, it doesn't matter, just do it. He doesn't want to shut down the government, and you guys know where you're going to be looking out for that as cases are going to continue to rise. I just want to show this picture. I think it's kind of powerful. This is a microbiologist who basically just, this is, did an informal test, okay? But you can see the Petri dishes of no mask versus the Petri dishes of a masked person. You can just see the amount of respiratory particles that transmit from one person to the other with or without a mask. This is why they're effective. If you're sick or not sick and asymptomatic and come in here and you're sitting within six feet of each other in a closed room for more than 15 minutes, like you're doing now, a sneeze, a cough, even talking can transmit respiratory droplets that you can then inhale and take on viral load. Putting on a mask significantly decreases that. Another thing is you can see distances, so doing the same thing, mask, no mask. And the big point is, you know, at two feet, you've got a lot of droplets without a mask. Four feet, you've got some. And then at six feet, the amount of respiratory droplets that cause pathology was also very little. So that's why social distancing is really important. It's also why being outside, also, you don't have to wear a mask. And if you're going to know that you're going to be inside with somebody farther than six feet away, you also probably don't have to wear a mask. I'm talking about inside six feet indoors for more than 15 minutes is when we need to be doing it. This disease is more infectious than many of the other diseases that we know. It has a high infectivity rate, so for every one person that gets it, they're going to give it to two and a half people. That may not seem like a lot. For the flu, it's 1.1 and 1/4 person. So if you extrapolate that out, each person every five days gives it to two and a half people. After 30 days, you've got 406 people that have been affected by one person. That's why you see these explosive numbers happen over the course of a few weeks. Just 50% less exposure. This is from a lab at Stanford. And all it is is simple exponential mathematics. 50% less exposure can actually decrease one person's transmission over the course of 30 days to 15 people, and 75% less exposure to just two and a half. These are the measures that masks are going to help prevent, that social distancing is going to help prevent. This is Hart County data. I look at this every day from the Department of Health. Actually, when I first made the presentation a week ago, it was on the 8th. You can see the top line. I don't want to get too busy, too much on this busy slide here. But you can see in parentheses the caseload of how high it went up in one day. Over 3,500 cases. If you look down there in the 13th, the second set of data, you know, we're about the same. 3,500. We're maintaining a very high new case positivity rate every day. Our death rate has been, in Georgia, it's been in the low 20s to mid-20s for the last few weeks. We did have a spike earlier in June that had some in the 40s. And right when this thing first hit, we got maybe around in the 60s in one day. But it really didn't last long in terms of our death rate. That's great. Hart County, you can see, our numbers were flat for a long time. And you can see just over the course of the week, they went from 91 to 117. And these are real people who are getting really sick, and I'm seeing them in my office. And if you can look in the eyes of somebody in the hospital who doesn't have any oxygen because they've got a virus, might put them on a ventilator and kill them, you're going to take this seriously. That four is one person who I think might die from that disease that I saw in the hospital. One person. That means that it's nothing but a number for you right now. But when you see what this is doing to people, you start taking this more seriously. We all know somebody who's, somebody in our story, you know, on Facebook or in our life, who had it, or who had a scare, or maybe you even thought, "Should I get tested for it?" This is not going to go away. More and more people are going to get sick. More and more people are going to unfortunately die from it. And that's kind of the big thing right now. A lot of people are talking about it. So this is, this is a really cool, interactive dataset that actually is on Google. And it's using John Hopkins' data to track this stuff. But you can actually see, this is for Georgia. This is what our curve looks like for cases. Now, we've got arguments for, "Well, we're testing more, so we're going to have more cases." We're still seeing in the medical community a disproportionate increase of cases to the amount of tests we're running. Our positivity rate is getting higher. Our hospitalization rate is getting higher. That doesn't account for more testing. That accounts for more disease. And we really want to know how much disease we have, because if we want to have, in terms of epidemiology, what we look for of this positivity rate is if we test 100 people and only five are positive, we can call that fair enough control to continue business as usual. We are not even close to that positivity rate in Georgia. This is our death rate, and you can see, fortunately, our death rate has not mirrored the curve of cases. But as you know, that typically lags about a month. This is the only other thing I wanted to show you. Take a look at Texas. You know, this is, what was the hot topic, you know, the epicenter last month with high cases and them sounding the alarm, and their governor, Governor Abbott said, you know, just basically stopped short of saying "mandating masks" in Texas. Now, in the last week, that's their death toll, and it's gone up. It's not just going to be in Texas. It's going to happen in Florida and Georgia next. Okay, so this is wrapping it up. I really would just ask that Hart County officials, you guys have the ability to actually save lives. I would not be here if this weren't a life-and-death matter. But if you guys can promote that all individuals wear a mask in public places, that businesses maintain physical distancing measures as much as they can, support the local community and increase testing to actually find out how much disease we have here. And then, of course, just the simple stuff of, you know, if you're sick or if you know somebody that's sick, encourage them to stay home to prevent the spread. So, you know, I appreciate you giving me some time. I know you have a busy night ahead. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions if you had any. So thank you.
Got a quick question for you. We hear all the horror stories about the data. Do you feel like the data is accurate?
So that is actually a really good question. It is lumpy, especially in Georgia. The way that we report it, or have reported it, and they're trying to get better, but it's lumpy at best. But you can't argue that big a change by some faulty data. This is huge. This is not data errors or data flaws. Once you hit a certain point of enough data, you are going to, no matter what the fringes look like or the margin of error is, you are going to get a general trend. So me, I look at the big picture of what the data shows us, not the super detailed fuzzy picture that you can get lost with with the data. I can guarantee you that this is the, you know, I really wish that we did better. I wish we were able to track this better. But heck, I mean, we didn't even have a test for this thing a few months ago. And so what we've been, what we've been capable of doing, and, you know, the testing now is still suboptimal. You know, if I send it to a certain lab, it can take over a week to get your results. And I know when I tell people, "Go home, isolate, you've got to wait until the test comes back," they don't do that. You know, you wouldn't want to be cooped up and wait on this test for a week and each day that passes, wonder, "Was it there or not?" No, you're going to go to the grocery store. You're going to go to, maybe go to church or interact with other people, and you know you shouldn't, but people aren't taking it seriously. So if we have more accurate, faster tests, I would say the data will get a lot better. But we're doing the best that they can in terms of public health, but they're limited resources. One other thing, and this should really alarm you. The best test that we have is an outpatient. It's only 75% accurate. That means for 1 in 4 Corona cases, we're missing them. It's saying it's negative. So imagine how many cases we're not even catching. If anything is wrong with the data, it is undercounting the amount of cases, no doubt about it. And we will see that reflected in the death toll here in Georgia in a couple of weeks. What can we do? Try to prevent the spread. It's as simple as putting on a face mask. And I encourage you not to view it as an infringement on rights. Because you're, you know, our rights as human beings in the United States of America end when they interfere negatively inside someone else. And so we have to maintain, this is not an individual disease. This is a community disease. And we have to do this together. And by opting not to wear a mask, or not to, you know, social distance, or not to abide by gathering limitations, we are infringing on other people's rights to be able to do that safely. Thank you. Anything else? I'd be happy to take any questions.
Appreciate your work, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, too. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks. Next item on the agenda is reports by Constitutional officers and department heads. Mr. Gordon?
I don't have any separate report tonight.
County Administrator's report?
I don't have anything to add, sir.
Chairman's report. We'll start with the June financials.
All righty. We're 3/4 away through our fiscal year. And as you can see, looking at our actual revenues, revenues for the month of June came in at $694,483 against expenses of $1,314,613. You see, both of those are in the red. The reason the revenues are in the red is because property taxes, which is our largest revenue driver, was due in December of last year. Monthly variance in expenses versus revenues of negative $620,130. And you can see the previous months, in April and May, we were way under the target for expenses, the target being $1,35,566. So year-to-date reserve variation is a positive 2.2 million. So far, so good. Everything's looking good. We're going to continue to see that number drop as we go through July, August, and September. Our key revenue drivers, our top four, real property, which is property tax, targets $470,000 a month. That is an average. We came in at $43,464. But when you go back and look at November, December, and January, we were way over where we needed to be. So so far, so good with the property tax collection. Year-to-date, we're at $5,506,178 versus the target of $4,230,000. That target's not right, I don't think. It's based off of where we're at in month-to-date, so. Yeah, it's right. It's because it's month-to-date. I mean, year-to-date, basically, that's nine months, so it'll wipe them out as we go forward. LOST, again, largest month on record of this fiscal year. The economy here locally is very strong. And you can go back and see the prior highest month was $244,000 back in October. Our budgeted target for LOST is $188,000. We came in at $250,000, so about $62,000 overage there. EMS fees were down a little bit. Missed a goal by $10,000. That fluctuates based on billing and call volume. And lastly, vehicle title fee for the month of June came in at $108,999 versus a target of 62. And you can see there, we've been significantly over the target the entire year. A lot of people buying a lot of cars. That's solely what that's all about. Any questions about the financial report?
I want to make one comment. The reason expenses were so high this month, we had three pay periods this month instead of two like before.
Any questions on the financial dashboard?
No.
Moving back into Chairman's report, I just got a couple of things. I've had some conversations, I know some of the Commissioners have too, with the Franklin County Board of Commissioners as well as Representative Allen Powell. We want to schedule a joint meeting with the Franklin County Board of Commissioners to talk about the amendments to the Airport Authority-enabling legislation. And I've asked Representative Powell if he would chair that meeting. And needing to look at some dates in the next three, two, three, four weeks of when everybody could get together and meet, so that we can get working on this. Does anybody have any questions in regard to that? I know I've talked to everybody about this before. And it's something we wanted to have already had done, but unfortunately, we didn't get none because Franklin County was working on their budget. But I have talked to some of the Franklin County Commissioners today, and they agree they want to meet with us, and let's get this issue resolved. And the next thing I want to say is, there's a gentleman who's served on the Airport Authority. His name is Eddie Addison. He was a Franklin County appointee. He has done more, in my opinion, for this Airport Authority than anybody's done in the last several years. We never got updates like we get, or we were getting now. The information flow is very open and very transparent. Meeting minutes were available. And I just want to reach out and say that unfortunately, Mr. Addison has been subject to some political and personal agendas and was not reappointed. But I just want to give Eddie Addison a pat on the back and a job well done. And I think I speak for all the Commissioners here. I think we all feel very strongly that this gentleman went above and beyond. And I'll let you all address that if you want to in your Commissioners' reports. It's just unfortunate that political agendas, egos, sometimes get in the way of politics. And this is a volunteer position. And I just want to publicly thank him for the job he's done. So that's all I've got under Chairman's report, Commissioners' report, District 2.
I appreciate the job at our law enforcement, first responders, EMS, and our fire department, our county employees do. And like what Joey said about Mr. Addison, you know, he did keep us informed as a board. I know since he was on there, he'd come and fore here, you know, three or four different times, and kept us informed, and I appreciate the job that he did.
District 3?
Yeah. I would also like to commend the job that Eddie Addison has done for our Airport Authority. This is a man who, when he went on the Airport Authority, they didn't even have no money in their treasury. They had no money. He went and went ahead and paid his ground lease of $20,000 so that they would have money to operate. You know, I believe his heart and soul was in this Airport Authority. He's a businessman. He's not a politician. And he was up there at that airport every day. He loved what he was doing. He was trying to build and accomplish and improve the airport that we have. And like I said, I would, I appreciate the job that he has done. Also, I had a gentleman to approach me, well, I've had several to talk to me about, what if someone comes into my yard and I don't want them there? And I'm not a lawyer. I'm not qualified to answer those questions. So I reached out to the Chairman, and we reached out to the Sheriff and our district attorney. And Parks is willing, along with the Sheriff, to be here July 28th and to go over the Stand Your Ground law here in the state of Georgia. And that way, it'll be on video, and people can go back and review it if they don't understand something. But on July 28th, Parks White will be here explaining the Stand Your Ground law. Thank you.
District 4?
Yeah, I want to hear what everybody said about Mr. Addison. I've been on his board. I was only four years way back when, and then I got back on it in 2015. And I have not heard one report from Airport Authority until he and Mr., what's the other guy we put on there?
Mark Brown.
Mark Brown, yeah. And that was part of Mr. Brown's resume when he sent it in, that he would make sure we got regular reports. And they've upheld that. We've got regular reports. They've really worked hard. I've been to one meeting with them, talked to them occasionally, and they've done a good job with it. I hate to see politics get involved or something like that. But I hope that they'll get all that work back, and I hope we get it worked back and things. That's all I got to say about that. I also want to report on the census report. Hart County, and these numbers were as of June 24, 2020. Hart County has a 55.1% response rate, self-response. You can do this online. You get it in a mail, and you send it back in. So right now, at that time, 20 days ago, pardon me, 20 days ago, Hart County's had 51.6% response. That's pretty good. And I would like to tell everybody, a lot of people say, "Well, that ain't none of the government's business." But it does affect us as a county. It affects you as citizens, because that's where a lot of your grants come from. All of that data is put out there for the benefit of you. And if you don't fill out the form, and we get the proper number, then we are apt to lose substantial amounts of grants or help from the state and federal government. Thank you. So I would advise everybody to get out there and get that done. Thank you. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
I do want to kind of circle back for a couple of things. As far as District Attorney being here at our next meeting, if anybody has any questions about the Stand Your Ground law, if you will submit them to any of us or the County Administrator, we will get them to Mr. White in advance of the meeting so that he can answer those. So for those of you out there watching and hearing the audience, if you've got specific questions that you would like answered, if you'll get them to us, we'll get them to Parks White so he can answer them in that meeting. And this will give everybody an opportunity to have a video where they can go back and watch and see what our district attorney has to say about that. I do want to make a further point of clarification on the Airport Authority. There is an investigation that has gone on by the GBI. It was reported by the Chairman, Thomas Bridges, Franklin County, at their Board of Commissioners meeting last night, that that is complete. I did reach out to Jesse Maddox at the GBI today. The investigation is, and he put in capital letters, "not complete." So just so we're aware of that, that's not the case as was reported. Moving on down to old business, Item 12A, FY21 Bid Awards for Uniforms for Football, Cheerleading, Basketball, and Photography. We've gotten a packet recommendations by the Advisory Board, and I think we need to take these individually. I do have questions on the football bids. I do have questions on the football bids, but as far as the individual ones, we'll take, we'll do the football uniforms first. The Advisory Board recommended going with Royal Graphics, and I don't understand why. Looking at the numbers, I asked Jim Owens, our Recreation Director, to get me the numbers so we can see who's truly the low bidder. Using last year's numbers, Royal Graphics is not the low bidder, Carew Sports is. If you look at the individual bids on the youth jerseys, Carew Sports was $4 higher than Royal Graphics on the youth jerseys. On the youth pants, Carew Sports was $6 cheaper than Royal Graphics. And last year, there were 98 youth jerseys, uh, youth pants and 101 youth jerseys. So when you do the math with the mix and you throw in the adults, there were only nine adult pants and six adult jerseys. When you do the math with the mix, Carew Sports comes up to $5,389. Royal Graphics is $5,564. So the mix of youth versus adult is going to impact who is truly the low bidder. And I think we can only go by the data that we had last year in making this decision. I know, Lonnie, you're here from the Advisory Board. I don't know what your justification was.
Hi.
If you want to address the board, if you'll come forward.
Commissioners, thank you for hearing me. I'm Lonnie Robinson. I'm the chairman of the, your rec advisory board. The reason why we made that decision was simply by the bids, the bids that was given to us. We did not take into account last year's numbers because of COVID and where we are now. Our numbers were already low. Last year, they came in low, ended up being higher at the end. This year, the numbers are way, way low, and Royal Graphics is, to us, by these numbers, just by going bid, bid, is the lowest bidder. So that's why we made that decision. We did not take into account last year's numbers.
Well, you got to take into account the mix in order to determine who the low bidder is, and I understand that's an estimate. That's all we can go by.
Correct.
That's why I use last year's data.
Well, Mr. Commissioner, if you look at the numbers, the numbers are yet again lower than they were last year. So those youth numbers, you're looking at adult-sized pants. We don't have big kids playing recreation ball. We have some, but not as many. So if you're taking into account that, we looked at raw numbers, bid numbers, bid, whatever each one of them came in at, and Royal Graphics is the lowest bidder. You accounting those numbers, that's new to us. We just want to be here to support why we made our decision.
So how is Royal Graphics the low bidder? If you take a youth uniform and look at the numbers, Carew Sports is $50, and Royal Graphics is $52?
Again, Commissioner, we're looking at, you're saying youth sizes. So apparently, you may know something we do not know as far as.
No, I'm looking at the numbers. Youth jerseys is $24. Youth pants was $28 at Royal Graphics. That's $52. Carew Sports is $28 for the youth jersey, $22 for the youth pants. And both of them are bidding the same name brand pants. So you got $52 per youth for Royal Graphics, $50 per youth on Carew Sports. And if you look at the numbers, you basically have a nine-to-one ratio of youth versus adults versus previously. So your youth jerseys is where your savings is going to be, and the fact that your numbers are going to be skewed so far to the youth side, in my opinion, Carew Sports is the low bidder.
Commissioner, again, we disagree by the numbers that have signed up for sports for football, which is upon us now. We don't have those bigger sizes or last year's numbers ago, but we're going by what was in front of us and the numbers that we have in front of us right now.
So you got the same numbers that we have right now. This is a summary that was given to us, I think you guys.
You seen this?
These are just, this is just your quote numbers.
Correct. Right.
Yeah, we've seen the quote numbers, I mean, the bid numbers, but again, you're anticipating adult-sized kids, and then you're going and pulling back from last year's numbers. We're looking at this year and what those bids are.
So if I look at the youth, the Royal Graphics for a youth pants and jersey is $52. Carew Sports is $50.
Are you just looking at the two?
I'm taking the $28 for the Champ Pro youth jersey for Carew Sports and the youth pants Champ Pro, $22. That's one uniform.
These two right here.
That's fifty, yes. That's $50.
Okay.
You look at Royal Graphics, the same combination is $52. So it's $2 more per youth player. And looking at your numbers, if you break this down, 90% of your players who are participating are going to use youth uniforms. Only 10% or less are going to use the adult. And when you look at the adult, Royal Graphics is actually the low bidder of $52 versus $55 for Carew Sports. But because the mix is so heavily skewed on the youth side, that makes Carew Sports the low bidder.
You're saying it's skewed. I'm looking at.
I'm looking at the numbers of participants.
Of last year.
Of last year.
Again, I'm not going by last year's numbers.
We never, when we look at bids, look at last year's numbers. We always do what evidence that was presented to us.
Okay.
Current numbers.
You don't have current numbers. Only current numbers you have is the actual per.
Administrator.
That's where, that's where the issue's at. They're not looking at the participants.
When they don't have it, they can send it back.
Commissioner. Commissioner, yes. Again, we accounted everything. Flag football, we go.
Flag football have no useful, no issues.
Still numbers.
No, the flag football, it's clear that.
Can I make a suggestion?
We still have bids.
Flag football is clear Royal Graphics is the low bidder. There's no argument there. All the other ones, it's clear. There's no issue. The issue that I have is the youth football uniforms. The low bidder is not Royal Graphics based on last year's numbers and the fact that the youth uniforms are $2 cheaper at Carew, but they are $3 more expensive, I'm sorry, yeah, $3 more expensive for the adult. So the mix skews it toward Carew.
Commissioner, again, we took all into account. We didn't break football up at all. We included youth football and tackle football all in that bid. So we didn't break any of it up. So what you, what I'm hearing now is that you're breaking up tackle football and leaving out flag football, which we have a good flag football following in this community. So we did all of football versus tackle football and separating the flags. So altogether, is how we got those numbers, is what we looked at.
Can I, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
When I was looking at these numbers, I was coming up basically the same way you come up with. You have to know the numbers to ever say who's low bid and who's high bid. This is what I see, and this is what I was going to talk about tonight. Number one, we need to start putting numbers on this spreadsheet so that we can look at them in the tokens. Well, just use last year's numbers. When you put it out for bid, you put 100 to 150. So if you're going to use 100 and 150 flag football, because that's the only thing that's on the bid, is you got 100 to 150. So I'm sitting here looking, okay, adult. We're not going to have 150 adults out there. Are that just adults? So those things need to be broken down to the closest numbers you can estimate that's going to be. That way, you've got a bigger, better understanding of the bid. All right, now, here's my thoughts, and here's what I had come up with when I was reading this. Number one, you got two people bidding.
You got more than two.
Two low bids, all right? Royal Graphics hadn't been bidding in years, and now they do. So I don't want to throw them under the bus and say they're not the lowest bidder, because we can break that bid up. I believe our bidding documents allow us to do that. We might have to get a legal reading on that. But the thing is, let's get, can we buy from the low bidder on this and buy from the low bidder on the other? I don't know why we can't do that. And if we can't do that, we need to change our bid documents before we can.
That'll be solely upon you, the commissioners, but what we as a board did, your board, we had, we went by the numbers that we had, and we did all of football, flag football all the way up to the 11U, pretty much our 12U.
You simply looked at the, at the bid, the individual per diem bid for each individual item. That's how you did it. You guys didn't take into consideration the mix. That's what we're talking about tonight.
I understand it, but.
That's the difference.
Why come we can't buy from Royal Graphics if they are the lowest bid on certain items and buy from Carew Sports if they're the lower bid on the other items? Is there any law that says we can't do that? Is it?
Commissioner, I just think if that's the direction, if you give us direction, we would know, or we could give Jim direction on what he need to be bidding so that he can bring it to you, and you can say yea or nay.
Well, here's the deal. We don't have a clue how many numbers until you sign them up, right or wrong.
Well, but what we went by, Commissioner, is all of the numbers from flag football to the la, to the last tackle team. And we went across, and we did that number in each one of those bidders, whoever sent any bids to us, whether they was from Ohio or wherever, New York, California, all of those bids, we went across from flag and we did all of it. So we didn't break anything up, and we did not use last year's numbers.
Well, my numbers come up with, if we use Royal Graphics at $28, if you've got 100 uniforms, that's $2800. If you use Carew Sports for those same, at $22 times 100, you got $2200. That's a savings of $600 right there. If we got 150, your saving goes up to $900.
Well, you're looking at your, you're looking at.
I'm looking at the total number based on 100, because I didn't have a clue what the base is on.
You just chose one, one specific number.
Those two, the last two items.
Well, when this board looks at awarding a bid, we look at, try to look at the total dollar impact and apply it to what we're going to spend. I don't know if that's how y'all do it in the school board or not. That's how this board tries to look at it, is that we try to look at what is the total cost and look at it from down to, so we know who is the true low bidder. The issue you have here is the recipe mix, and that's where the advisory board didn't take that into consideration, and probably we should have said, let's look at it that way. And that's why I wanted to give you an opportunity to see why the advisory board went the way that they did, because I didn't know.
Well, Commissioner, and it was because we accounted for all flag all the way to the last kid.
Now, what all, flag football, what all does that include?
That includes just a.
Just a jersey, right? T-shirt.
So all of that was from, from flag all the way up to 11U, which is the number that we went all the way across for whoever put a bid in for those uniforms. And we didn't separate football, whether it was tackle or flag, Commissioner. We did from flag all the way to 11U. So that's how we got that number.
If y'all want to get tested, well, that one up there from Merlin is really the cheapest, way.
We know what kind of issues we've had out of these folks.
Well, I understand that, but if we're going to have any kind of issues with people like it, we don't need to contact them, ask them to bid. We're wasting their time.
I don't think we, I think they just do it automatically from our website post.
They contact.
I just wanted to share how we came up with that number, Commissioners. It was from.
One, one do y'all need to know an answer to this?
Well, we were expecting your blessing, but again, if you say different, we have to go back and regroup, but it'll be carried back to the advisory board on what you tell us to do, the direction that you give us. We simply added, again, from flag, that youngest kid to the oldest kid, and we did each kid. Just one kid.
I'm comfortable awarding this tonight, but I think the football's got to be split up. I think you give the flag football to Royal Graphics. I think you give the youth jerseys and adult jerseys and youth pants and adult pants, you give that to Carew. Or if you wanted to, you could look at the actual pants, give that to Carew, because they're cheaper, and let Royal Graphics have the jersey part.
Well, Royal Graphics cheaper on four items. Carew cheaper on two items. The way I look at it.
But you look at the mix. But you look at the mix, that's where you.
But I ain't looking at the mix. I'm looking at what they cheaper on. I don't have no number to look at the mix.
That's, we looked at the lowest bid all the way across. That's what the board.
If I had the numbers, I'd done had this figured out, and I ain't got the numbers. So I can't figure it out. But I know who's lower on this item and who's lower on that item. And as far as I'm concerned, if there's nothing illegal about what we're doing or immoral, and our bid documents, I think, allow this, because as soon as we go back and negotiate, we can go with Carew on the two that they're cheaper on, and we can go with Royal Graphics on four that they're cheaper on.
Just, Commissioner, Chairman, just want to go on record, we were trying to go with the lowest bid.
I understand. We appreciate that.
The advisory board was trying to get.
All right, we appreciate it.
If we do what we thought might do, everybody gets a piece of the pie.
I'll have to go back and check the bid documents.
It seemed like I remember reading on time where that could be done.
May, maybe there may not be in there, but I'll read those documents to be sure.
I agree.
It is. Well, let's, let's not award a football bid tonight. We can put that on our next meeting.
Royal Graphics hadn't been bid in a long time. I wouldn't, they were pretty reasonable on them four. I wouldn't.
Well, there's no, I don't have an issue with any of the other stuff. The cheerleading stuff, I think is very clear. Royal Graphics is a low bidder there, and that's also a recommendation by the advisory board. So let's just go ahead and.
I make a motion, we bid, to take the rec advisory's bid recommendation, Royal Graphics on the cheerleading uniforms.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carter to award Royal Graphics cheerleading uniforms. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Let's look at youth basketball. Same situation. A recommendation was Royal Graphics. Find it in the page, there with me. Royal Graphics was 15th for youth and adult. Trying to find the sum of the sheet. Carew was 18, 15, 19.
I'll make a motion to award the bid to Royal Graphics.
I have a motion by Commissioner Carter. Is there a second to award the bid to Royal Graphics?
And I'm going to add something to that motion. Next time, we need to know some kind of numbers, if possible. I know you can't give me the accurate numbers for this year, but we need to know something when it goes out. It will make it easier on us, and I think it'll make it easier on y'all.
Is there a second on the youth basketball? I'm still trying to find it. Here it is. I got it. I got it. I'll second Commissioner Carter's motion. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. The last part would be the photography. Recommendation is to use Lifetouch out of Snellville.
I make a motion, we go with the rec advisory's recommendation of Lifetouch.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer. Second by Commissioner Teasley to award the photography to Lifetouch out of Snellville, Georgia, as per the Recreation Advisory Board's recommendation. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is request for pay for experience for the road department. I think we left off two years of individuals. We did, and that was my fault. I wrote down eight instead of 10.
I'll make that motion.
Make it retroactive back to. Correct. Back one pay period from now.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Carter, and second by Commissioner Teasley to grant the two additional years for a road department employee credit for experience, making it retroactive back to the hire date. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the election to decide liquor by the drink and Sunday sales of liquor by the drink.
Mr. Chairman, this is.
Mr. Chairman, this is, at the last meeting, you had asked me to determine whether or not we have the time or whether or not we can make the deadline to have this question on the general election ballot on November third. And my answer to that, my short answer to that question is, yes, we got time. And in fact, we have more time than I had originally believed. And in order to present you with the appropriate resolution, there's some questions that I've got to have answered. I don't have a resolution for you to act on because I don't know the answers. And what we can do is go through those and you can give me your direction now if you're able. And there's several questions. The primary question will be the location of licensees for liquor by the drink. Now, on the first location or entity, I would presume would be restaurants. Well, we all agreed on that one. I mean, I think that one was, you had specifically mentioned, so it will cover restaurants. Now, there's also a separate provision under the state law on private clubs. Will it include private clubs? Our, just to give you some background data, our beer and wine licensing ordinance does cover private clubs as a separate category.
I think you got to.
All right, well, I have no objection there. Then, the next category would be nonprofit civic groups. What the state law, what the state law allows is that nonprofit civic groups, and there's a specific legal definition to that, may apply for up to six days per year of a special license and the cost of the license is mandated at twenty-five dollars. That would be, just to put it in a perspective everybody would know about, the, one of the Depot Street festivals that was done, the Downtown Development Authority, I believe, was given a city event license for that day. So that question then would be, do you want to include, would you want to allow licensing for nonprofit civic groups to serve liquor by the drink?
Say more, like the boat shows, boat races that we've had at then oh twenty-nine, would that be covered in something like that or not?
It probably would. It depends on who's actually the sponsor. Does the Chamber of Commerce sponsor that?
They do.
Not anymore.
Well, they would be a nonprofit road. You know, it's hard for me to, I can't really say that like all boat shows, you know, or all boat competitions would be capable of getting this or would be allowed, or that it would be allowed. But basically, yes, it is a special events license, something similar to what the city of Hartwell has on its beer and wine licensing.
As far as the referendum, is it gonna be four separate questions or is it gonna be three or...
I believe that it can be expressed as one question. I also believe that it could be expressed as four different ones.
I think it's gonna be four different ones.
I don't see why you can't do it that way.
I think each one's gotta be different.
Further report. Now, the next, so we'll add on, add nonprofit. Now, the next one that the state allows, again, it's purely up to you. I don't think it would apply to about one person right now, but limousine carriers, that is something that the state allows for liquor by the drink to be licensed, to licensed limousine carriers. Now, at one time, I think there was a private operator of a limousine here. I don't remember really who it was, but I guess he still does that. And I do think that Cotici Golf Club offers a limousine service and whether or not, they may have such a license through the city because Cotici is technically a city property. But when you go around with a limousine, I mean, it's going in and out of everywhere. So that is another one that you might want to consider.
I think we're getting too detailed.
All right, we'll take that off. And then the final one would be off premises catering, when someone is involved in off premise catering. In other words, it's the same thing as a restaurant, but it wouldn't qualify as a restaurant because people are not coming in and having the drink there at the restaurant. It would be the restaurant or someone like, you know, some chef or whoever would go out to them.
Don't like a wedding or something like...
Yeah, exactly.
I don't really see a problem with it. That may, that would be a special event, too.
Well, once you think about that one, I'll provide for that in the, in what you'll see next, okay? And you might want to think about it, we could take it out. Now, the other thing that needs to be decided as a preliminary matter is the amount of excise tax that would be levied on the liquor sales. The maximum local excise tax can be three percent and that would certainly cover your current local sales tax of three percent, splosh, lost and education splosh.
That's above and beyond this sales tax?
You know, I believe that it is and that would come directly to the county. I'll need to check further on that, I don't want to promise you that, but I believe that it does come in addition to the regular sales taxes. And again, if you want to think about that one, you can let me know. It's just that the state law does allow a maximum of three percent and as a general rule, that's one of the reasons that governments consider such referendum, you know, is to acquire a larger tax base. The referendum will be, will occur on November the third, which will be in conjunction with the general election. And interestingly enough, there is a different method or different time periods applied when, and why, I don't know, but this is just the eminent wisdom of the state of Georgia. There is a difference in the time periods that apply to normal special elections and then, because this is a special election, and then special elections which are held in conjunction with the general election. And given that this one will be a special election held with the general election, I believe that the longer time period would require, would apply. But in any event, you got plenty of time to do this and I believe it can be done by the next meeting. If I do find that something needs to be done, then I'll bring that to the board's attention. There's also, these time deadlines are kind of confusing. One is that you must resolve to do this ten days before you call the election. Then, when you call the election, that election has to be held in no less than ten days and no more than sixty days after you call it. And it has to be published in the paper a certain number of times. So there are a lot of little ticky details, you know, that have to be followed for it to be a lawful referendum. But hopefully I'll have something for you at the next meeting and as I say, if for some reason or any reason that I see that the deadline is approaching, I'll let you know.
Well, this pertaining to Sunday sales, didn't we...
That will also be a secondary referendum, okay? I remember right that that was done for beer and wine last year.
Two years ago.
Yeah, two years, on Sunday sales. So that referendum is basically gonna be the very same, but it will be applied to liquor by the drink. And I do believe that that can be a concurrent election. In most places, they have the authorizing election first, authorizing liquor by the drink. And then they come back and have a second election on Sunday sales. I think you can do them both on the same day. And there's one other thing that I can tell you about that I probably need a little direction. Originally, the state law permitted the local referendum at Sunday sales to include the times of twelve-thirty PM to eleven-thirty PM, okay? I believe that this year, the legislature changed that law to allow for earlier opening, earlier opening than twelve-thirty PM. Would you want to simply go with whatever the state says you can do? Would you want to put that on the question?
I think we should be consistent with what we did before.
Well, what we did before was twelve-thirty to eleven-thirty, yeah, twelve-thirty PM to eleven-thirty PM.
My thoughts, that way you got everything the same. You just cut down a lot of confusion.
Yeah, I kind of like that idea and I, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but I can't fathom that, you know, a couple of hours would make much difference. I'm not a restaurant owner and it might, but I don't think it would.
I'm fine with it, twelve-thirty.
Very well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item twelve D, House Bill eleven eighty-nine, which is the ballot question for November general election, increasing the home state exemption from ten thousand to fifteen thousand for those aged sixty-five and older.
I don't believe there's any action need to be taken on this, it's just more for information.
Well, there's an interesting thing in here. When you look at it, the vote that was taken at the state legislature, there was one person in the House and the Senate who voted against it.
Yeah.
So I don't know who that is, I'm curious to see. I'll have to look that up when I get home, but, so we're ready to go there. That is something that Representative Powell did get through the legislature. That will also be on the ballot as a point of clarification. This has nothing to do with school tax. I want to make that very clear, this has nothing to do with school tax for those sixty-five and older. This is simply an increased home state exemption on the board commissioner's side of the property tax bill.
We've done this before though. It had nothing to do with...
No, that's what I'm saying, this is point of clarification, that was a school tax, so. Okay, moving on to new business, item thirteen A. We got a couple of requests for paid for experience in the sheriff's office. One was for two years for a drug investigator who was a previous employee of the sheriff's office and also worked in Elbert County. And the other one was credit for...
Eight years.
Eight years, I believe, wasn't it?
Right. I make a motion, approve.
Second.
Can we make them retroactive to the higher date?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, second by Commissioner Teasley to give credit for years of experience and make them retroactive to the higher date. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item thirteen B. This is a request for variance on setbacks. This time I'd like to recognize Mr. John Somrell. Is that right? You'll come forward?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Generally, you have copies of...
Yes, sir.
Good, good. A letter and then several pictures and diagrams. Robin Road is a very small road off of Crawford's Ferry, only eight houses on the road. The first two pictures are from the construction site from the front right corner of the house over toward the adjacent property owner. And I don't think you can see it in black and white. If it were in color, you'd see the lake in the distance. And then the second picture is my son holding a red rake. It shows you the extent of the little addition and it shows you, and I'm in the background, that's close to the property line, and it shows you how steep the lot is. The adjacent lot is radically steep, drop off and has a big drainage creek that comes and goes at the bottom and heavily wooded. And the key, I guess the a key point here is that the adjacent property owner, Neil Grafer, the last either six or seven, he is, he welcomed our request for the addition, for the exemption from the property line. And I think that that says most of it. I think that, I may not have the exact, I think page three is a diagram of the small addition, a rec room, a bedroom and a bath and total depth sixteen feet. You have a survey, I believe, that was taken, that was from a few weeks ago, and it shows the position of the house. The house is, you might say crooked on the lot and the front corner toward the lake, sorry, the back corner toward the lake has plenty of room for the ten-foot boundary. And then the back corner, the house is situated that way because everything begins to slope off and into that steep ravine in the next lot. So we would, we would be getting picky, maybe five feet, ten inches over. And I'm taking into allowance the roof overhang as well. And so just to be sure that we're not dealing with inches, I ask for a six-foot variance. Questions? Well, the last letter is, the first paragraph, you see the comments from my friend Neil Grafer about no concern about his property. He owns everything, I don't know how many, eight, nine lots going all the way around the cove and he lives on the other side of the cove. Questions?
So from the roof overhang to the property line, what is the distance?
From the roof overhang to the property line would be about five and a half feet. I better, excuse me, four and a half.
So you're looking at us giving you a variance where you have a ten-foot, ten-foot distance from the property?
Correct. We wouldn't, we wouldn't make it within the ten feet because the house is crooked on the lot.
You're putting a variance, it's giving a variance of five, five and a half foot and needs extra. He's supposed to have ten feet from the property line over. I think that's a bad idea. I know there's nobody there now, but if there were, there'd be a note put on that deed on the lot next to it that said there was a fifteen-foot setback. I think you could probably get by with it, but if he sells this property to somebody and they're building, they want to have a ten-foot setback, that's gonna cause us problems. We have to get emergency vehicles or something back there.
The thing that I was pointing out, he sees that nothing is likely to be built there because of a huge expense in clearing, but you, the thing drops off to the point you can't stand up when you walk down the hill.
We grant this variance, we're setting a precedence.
I'm sorry?
We grant a variance for this, we're setting a precedence. We're opening ourselves up.
Can I ask a question?
That's my opinion.
Walt, you might have to answer this question. If he went to the neighbor and got a easement, would that take care of this problem?
I'm sorry, say it again, please.
If you went to your neighbor and got an easement to take in that much property until it come back up here and got a right, is that something that can legally be done? No, your neighbor that you talking about probably never gonna build in there or sell the law or whatever, could give you an easement or you could purchase property. I mean, I ain't trying to tell you what to do. If you had a legal easement from him, would that take care of this problem?
Yes, I think so.
I'm not sure.
No, easement laws.
It might, I'll need to look at that, but certainly if you were to acquire, you know...
An additional five feet, that takes care of it.
That would solve it.
Is that something that's doable, you think?
I don't know, we're borderline on expenses anyway. I don't know the cost of buying an additional strip of land, it's expensive or so, I'm sure. But the easement, from a legal standpoint, the easement is a simple...
Easement's just for ingress egress, it has nothing to do with building.
The document that would give you, I mean, it can give you varying rights depending on what the state is going to do. It could give you a right of ingress egress, it could give you a...
It could give you a right to have your house over the land, although that's not something that generally would be done, that would be done with the actual acquisition of property.
When you talk about an emergency vehicle, the first picture or the second picture you have shows the property like this with no addition, with nothing.
We still have to, I mean, I'm a volunteer fireman. We have to get around on the backside.
Well, that's why we have it on that side, because then, then, then there's room left on the other side to drive back.
The problem is, if we grant a variance to this, we've opened ourselves up and established a precedent going forward, so anybody who wants it says, "You granted this one, why can't you grant mine?" And then somebody else over time comes and builds, wants to build five feet again, wants another variance, and we can't get a fire truck or something like that through on the backside. I mean, it is, that's why those setbacks are there, so that we can get around if we have to. That's part, one of the reasons.
Well, I guess my only answer to that is that you, on that side of the house, it's impossible to get a vehicle around there anyway because it drops off like this, and that's why we've allowed, you might say, an avenue on the other side of the house.
You're going to be setting a precedent when you do this. If this was an entrance to a subdivision with the 40-foot is, we've granted variances for that, but we've never granted a variance that I'm aware of on a property line setback.
The easement, the easement, if that's possible, that would satisfy you?
No.
The committee?
No. Moving the property line five feet would satisfy me.
If, I don't know my way around the legal problems to offer another explanation. If...
Here's the thing you do. I mean, I'm not standing there looking at property, seeing the line. You are good on the backside toward the lake.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
You just need to move it five foot here, so...
Some corner.
One corner.
Even, even the back corner toward the lake is clear.
It's plain. All you would need is just a small strip of land right there. I mean, if that land is unusable, unusable, he may give it to you.
And it wouldn't necessarily need to be the entire length of the...
No, it's just, just around the corner to maintain it.
That's a very small, very small.
With that extra, you know, like a, maybe like a little triangle.
Or an arc. Maybe you can give me an idea outside of the cost to the property line legally, what would be the thorough, the complete cost, attorneys, county...
Well, I think first you would have to have a survey. That, that's probably your...
Now, we just finished that. I just spent $500 on that.
Well, you'd have to have a survey of the part of the, yes, maybe over the part of the line from the neighbors. If you have a survey and you have the neighbors consent on a basket payment, you're probably looking at less than $500 to empty the fair, depending on, you know, who, what lawyer did some, others. It would depend on whether or not she wanted the title of them, so that it would be clear for you to own. So, there are a couple of variances, and then you've got to play a transfer tax of dollars per ounce to pay a thousand dollars, you have a $10 tax.
Sure.
But I don't think legally, legally, I would say that these are normal. I think that your survey is outside of the amount to pay for the actual land, your survey is probably lower than that.
Right, thank you.
When I, when I look at the survey, which is part of my packet, let's turn it over, it shows the corner of the house being 20 foot, 20.7 feet, but the front porch is actually going to be closer to the property line, so that's the part...
No, the, the front porch is farther. Now, I, I watched them, that is another point, the...
The front porch is closer. The corner is closer to the property line.
You're not going to extend the front porch?
Oh, no, no, no.
The porch going to stay where it's at?
So, the porch is not a part of the...
Understand? No? Well, yeah, okay, so it's not going to come all the way up to the front?
So, and, and the house is 25 feet wide, deep, and so the addition will be one foot inside of that resonant size, on each side.
Setback on each.
Setback on each side.
I didn't get you, one other thing you need to do before you renew any more money, get the health department to approve, will they go approve or reject? If they say no, it's a moot point.
Well, that's in progress, and...
We've got discussions when we come here. The state going to draw close to whatever we do.
Right, right. Correct. I, I expect that will be within the next 10 days, and it's pending. And I think that, I think what's, what they'll do is take a soil sample, and then it's newer than most septic systems, it's 19...
I can take you through all this other stuff and hit it in the bottom there.
All right. Thank you. Gentlemen, so from your standpoint, his suggestion is more expensive than possible, but we hadn't brought, so that is your solution? Is there anything that I might do that the business of the variance would be under consideration or for you to, for us to talk further?
I just, this is my opinion, I'm one of four. I just think that we're, that's going to cause us problems. Somebody could come and build a house right there next to, even though it may be a drop-off, they could put a basement there, and they could have that 10-foot setback, or they could ask for a variance there to get closer. We give it to you, we'd have to give it to them, then we can't get through with emergency vehicles. That's the problem. That's the reason the setbacks are there.
I, I hear what you're saying, and I sympathize with the emergency area, but there would have to be a drive to get to the house.
Not necessarily.
If there is a new house there, there'd have to be a drive to get to it. It's in the thick, thick woods, and...
We have woods fires all the time. I mean, I'm not trying to be smart, but...
No, I, I know, I hear, I hear what you're saying.
I just cannot, I cannot sit and give a variance here, because if I do it here, then, say, two years from now, the gentleman who's your neighbor sells that lot adjacent to you, and those people come and ask for a variance. We give it to my neighbor, we got to give it to them too. Then we create a problem. That's why the ordinance is in place.
Well, from the committee as a whole or anyone else, is there anything else that we might consider before I depart?
I'd be happy to come meet with you and discuss options or whatever, but I just...
Sure.
I cannot give, I cannot vote consciously to give a variance, because that means our whole ordinance is...
Do I have, I mean, is there a uniform...
How much property would he have to buy from this guy to make it work, Gerald? How much property would he have to buy from this?
Five feet.
Five foot?
Yeah.
I think I'd get...
I think, I think the, I don't know what he would charge you for five feet, but the legal expenses would exceed the price very likely if he's willing to sell it all. Anybody else?
But I'll be happy to, we're not going to take any action unless everybody wants to make a motion. So, I think that's pretty clear, we're not going to do a variance.
Yes, if, if I may, at some future point, if we could converse further, if you have any ideas ahead of it, I would appreciate it.
Just see if the neighbor quit claiming to me.
Sorry?
Just a quick claim deed, just to get that five, that 10-foot buffer all the way around.
All right.
The person that done your survey and making do, do a change on this map for very few dollars. I've seen that happen before. Because they could, if they got all this stuff documented, they could do it in-house. They wouldn't have to come out there and research.
Were you talking about this? Yes.
Yeah, your survey.
That would be charged, completely out of control.
Probably, once the health department says you're good, then I'd go to my survey and say, "Is this possible, and how would you do it?" And then you go to the person, say, "I need this book, right."
Without the health department's approval, anyway.
Yes, yes, I know, I know that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is FY21 legacy lien contract. This is an annual deal that we've got, got a little more money, a few more meals.
Correct. As the meal count goes up, the dollars go up the balance side.
I get a motion that we approve this...
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer and a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion, public comment? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is public comment. If anyone would like to come and address the board, if you'll come forward to the podium. Anybody for public comment?
Commission?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner, for allowing me to speak yet again. I wasn't clear on your instruction. I understand football is being tabled tonight, but can you give me some instruction on what is expected for the advisory board concerning this?
We just didn't take any action on football. We'll take a look at it a little more in detail and we'll...
Y'all can do, I can go back and look to be a document to see if that's able to split that up about this thing, or not, and then we'll... There's a question again.
There's no, nothing for the advisory board today.
Okay, so don't be consumed about the low bid, or?
No, don't, we...
I just got to check the documents, see if we can legally do what they're, what they're, they're ready to do. That's just a question we got to answer, yes or no.
We can split it.
From the low bid?
And that would be fair?
No, no. Not from the low bid. We're going to look at how it was advertised. On the football uniforms, the old graphic was cheaper on some of the, most of them all, one set. I got to look at the bid documents, see if we can buy all these others from old graphics, and it's one from this other supplier because there's a couple dollars. See if the bid, see if the bid documents have got that in there where I can legally do that.
Okay.
It may or may not, I don't know. That's why I got to look at it.
So, we're, don't touch this, is what I'm here for.
That's correct.
You've done yours part.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Doc, I get a motion, we're going to executive session for litigation in real estate.
Certainly.
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Sayer. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.
Make a motion with Jerry.
I say.
All in favor, Ms. Rock, of beating Jerry.
We can vote for the county voting.
Yeah, we won't have it because we're meeting long enough tonight.
Well, I think we can go home and look at it a little bit and then know what we're talking about.
Yep.
Well, the party ain't here. I'm going to the front door.
Yeah, well, you're so right, the party's locked.
Yeah, she get on his head.